Yeah, I wonder what is that? Gee, January never ends.
Ready? Good evening, all. I would like to call to order the Education Committee of the whole for tonight, February tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Prior to tonight's meeting, an executive session was held to discuss confidential and legal matters. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda items and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. If you choose to address the board, please fill out the comment card and hand it to our deputy superintendent, Ms. Ramos. Comment cards are located on the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name, address for the record, and call and limit your remarks to three minutes. At this time, Dr. Stanford, do you have any comments? Thank you, sir. At this time, we will be taking public comments on agenda items only. Do we have any cards? Okay, well, thank you. Okay. So at this time, we'll be having, this is Colette, will be presenting us with our first item for the night.
Good evening. I would like to request the board's approval of the agreement between St. Luke's Hospital of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, and the Allentown School District to provide vision vouchers to students who qualify. St. Luke's will provide the vouchers to eligible students and the eligibility criteria is based on financial need and the outcome of a vision exam or screening performed by an ASD school nurse. In addition, students must be underinsured or uninsured, and families will be given a list of participating providers who will provide diagnostic vision and eyeglass dispensing services. This program is at no cost to the district. Do you have any questions?
No questions? May I have a motion to move this item, the vision voucher program, to our next regular board meeting, which will happen on Thursday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two?
Motion.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Are there any opposeds? Hearing and seeing none, this moves on to our next regular board meeting. At this time, I will ask Ms. Brandy Sawyer to come forward with our second and final item for education tonight.
Good evening. Tonight, we're requesting the board's approval of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three ASD Program of Studies and move it forward for the final board approval on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Tonight, I have a presentation. Normally, I don't do a presentation for the Program of Studies, but tonight, with all the changes happening at state level for graduation, I'm going to do a presentation to present to you all of the changes for graduation because it does affect the Program of Studies, and it is one of the largest changes that are happening in the Program of Studies. So we're going to start with the presentation, and then we'll get into some of the recommended changes short term and some of the recommended changes long term. So, next slide, please. So the purpose of the Program of Studies, we'll start there just so we can set a basis for where the Program of Studies is. The Program of Studies is a blueprint for the learning path of each student in the Allentown School District. It enables families to be in control of their educational path as they're going through high school. It motivates and excites students to be able to select their courses as they're going through high school from ninth through twelfth grade, starting in eighth grade. We actually give it to them while they're in middle school so they can get excited about the courses that they're taking, and it's basically a menu of possibilities that help guide them through towards their college and career readiness. It also gives them the district graduation expectations. Now, it also, in, as an added bonus, it is going to include the Act One fifty-eight requirements, which are now the state graduation requirements, which I'm going to start going with you, going over with you now. Next slide. So this year, Act One fifty-eight came out in two thousand eighteen. Prior to this, Pennsylvania had the Keystone exams, and students had to pass the three Keystone exams in order to graduate, and it was on hold for a little while. They came out with these five pathways, and starting next year, the graduating class of two thousand twenty-three, the students have to fall within these five pathways. So I'm going to explain to you these five pathways. So in order to graduate, students have to fall within the Keystone proficiency pathway, the Keystone composite pathway, the CTE pathway, the alternative assessment pathway, and/or the evidence-based pathway, in addition to all of the ASD requirements. So they still have to have the four Englishes, the three maths, the three sciences, and all of those things that ASD requires. But now, instead of just having to pass a Keystone exam, the state has now started to recognize that students are more than just a test score, that they can provide other evidence in order to graduate. So I'm going to go through all of the different pathways. As I'm going through the pathways, I'll stop as we're going through those pathways. So if you have questions, you can ask because it's a lot easier than going through all five pathways and then asking questions at the end. So if you have them, I'll stop as we go through. Okay? So the first two are kind of easy. Keystone proficiency pathway basically states the students have to be proficient in all three Keystone exams, Algebra One, Literature, and Biology. Being proficient in those three pathways means that the students have to score a minimum of a fifteen hundred on all three Keystone's. So that's pretty simple. Minimum of fifteen hundred. That's the first pathway. If they meet ASD requirements and they score a fifteen hundred on all three, they automatically go to graduation. Okay? Next slide, please. The Keystone composite pathway is a little bit more contorted. You can earn a satisfactory composite score on all three Keystone's by scoring a proficient on one and at least a basic score. You can't have any below basics. So you have to have basic scores on the other two, and your total score has to add up to a forty-four fifty-two. So a proficient and two basics, and your total score has to add up to a forty-four fifty-two. So they did the little algebraic equation in the background, and if you take a proficient score, and it's not the complete high basic and high basic, it's kind of like a little bit in between the mid-basics, you get the composite of a forty-four fifty-two. I don't know what the exact equation is, so I can't be quoted on that exactly. But you get the composite of a forty-four fifty-two. So those two pathways lead you straight to graduation. Okay? Next slide, please. So if the students don't score within those two pathways, there are three other pathways that lead students to graduation. Now, these other three pathways, if we take Keystone proficiency out of the game, you have to pass the three courses at the district level. So you have to pass Algebra One, you have to pass Biology, and you have to pass tenth-grade Literature at the district level. Our scores at sixty percent or better, right, at the district level, and then you can fall within one of these last three pathways. So the CTE pathway is the pathway for LCTI students. Whether you're a part-time or full-time student, if you are at LCTI and you successfully complete any of these three any of these three competencies at LCTI, you pass the three courses and you successfully complete an industry-based competency certification, you can demonstrate the likelihood of completing an industry-based competency assessment. Some of those assessments you don't take until after graduation at LCTI. So if LCTI says that you are likely to pass that upon graduation, they can check that off for you. And then readiness for continued meaningful engagement in a CTE program. So if you're going to graduate and you're going to go into a program after graduation, LCTI can check that off for you as well. So that's an LCTI pathway. If the student is part-time and they don't fit into the LCTI pathway, then we would do a pathway for them at Allentown School District. Okay? Any questions about the LCTI? Like an LCTI pathway? So if a student was in Cosmetology and... So if so if the student was part-time at LCTI and they didn't fit into this pathway, there are two other graduation pathways that we're going to talk about here that they can fall into to provide evidence. Yep, yep. So those are the next two. Okay? So the fourth pathway, next slide, please, is called the alternative assessment pathway. Now, the alternative assessment pathway is is a pathway based on assessments. It's similar to a Keystone, but it is alternative to Keystone's. So Keystone's are fifteen hundreds. These are alternative to Keystone's. You have to pass the courses, but there are a host of other options that you can do in this pathway. You can take the SATs, you can take the ASVABs, you can take the ACTs, ACT work keys, you can take PSATs. So there's a whole host of other assessments that you can take here, and there are cut scores that you, that they require in this alternative assessment pathway. You can successfully complete a concurrent enrollment course. Concurrent enrollment course is a dual enrollment course that is similar to a Biology, a Literature, and/or an Algebra One course. Successful completion of a pre-apprenticeship program and acceptance into an accredited four-year institution. Students only have to show one piece of evidence here. So they pass the three courses, and then they show one piece of evidence in this pathway. So if they took a dual enrollment literature course in eleventh or twelfth grade, which we offer, right, that could count. They have to pass that dual enrollment course. That's a piece of evidence. If they got accepted into a four-year college, that is a piece of evidence. If they took the SATs and met the cut score, or the PSATs and met the cut score, we offer PSATs in tenth grade, we offer PSATs in eleventh grade, we offer SAT school gates, SAT school days in eleventh grade. So there's a whole host of things that we offer students to fit into this pathway as well. And...
But the PSATs and the SAT, we offer that. The students have to pay for that.
Nope. So we offer it on SAT and PSAT school days in October and in March. There's one coming up. And then we also offer it, if students don't take it on those days, they can opt to take them on Saturdays. And they can take them Saturdays anywhere. Yep. Any other questions about this one? There's still a waiver. Yep, there's a fee waiver they can fill out to take them for free. Absolutely. Any other questions? Because we're going into my favorite pathway next. So, next slide, please. So my favorite pathway is the one that really opens up opportunities for students to really show So my favorite pathway is the one that really opens up opportunities for students to really show a lot of different types of evidence that they are, it really expands out on a lot of different things. So they still have to pass the three courses. But in this pathway, again, a little bit more contorted, they have to show at least one piece of evidence in the top and then no more than two in the bottom. They can show all three pieces of evidence in the top, but, and none at the bottom, if they have all three pieces in the top. But they have to show at least one in the top and no more than two in the bottom. So at the top, you have SATs, PSATs, AP exams, like all of those alternative assessments, the same kind of assessments that you saw before. Acceptance into other than four-year colleges. So now you see two-year colleges, LTRCs, under the North Hamptons, those kinds of colleges come into play here. Attainment of industry-recognized credentials come into play here. So that opens up a wide range of things for students to get industry-recognized credentials and successful completion of a concurrent enrollment course. Any concurrent enrollment course. This opens up options for students to take dual enrollment courses of any interest that they have. So here, it's not, it doesn't have to be an Algebra one or a literature. It can be anything they're interested in. It can be a course in human growth and development, right? Anything they're interested in. So it really does open the gamut for, for a lot of things that students are interested in. On the bottom, service learning projects come into play. If you remember, a while back, we used to have graduation projects. Service learning projects are here. You're going to see that come up a little bit later. Proficient or advanced on a Keystone exam. Way a couple of years ago, last year, during COVID, students got a COVID pass that they didn't have to take the Keystone exam. That counts here. It didn't count prior. You had to take the Keystone exam in the first two pathways. Like I had to physically take it. Students that got a COVID pass, it actually counts in this, in this category. So it's really only going to count for the next year or so. Then it's, then it really doesn't matter anymore for those, for those COVID-passed students. Letter guaranteeing full-time employment. If students have full-time jobs and they're guaranteed full-time employment when they leave us, they can give us a letter guaranteeing full-time employment. And that counts here. Internship Cooperative Education Program counts here. And then NCAA core courses counts here as well. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, we put the NCAA requirements in the Program of Studies. We got ready for this by putting that in there. Okay? Any questions on this pathway? So far. So kids have to fall, starting next year, our 11th grade students have to fall in one of these five pathways. They have to meet our ASD requirements and they have to fall within one of these five pathways. The state gives us a 5% waiver. IEP students can graduate on IEP goals. And then we have these five pathways, which really does open it up to mean more than just test scores at graduation. Okay? Next slide, please.
Before you go to the next one?
Go ahead.
Question for you. How do you see this helping stop the drop, you know, the dropout rate? How do you, how do you perceive that?
So years ago, when it was all about test scores, it was, it was a, it was pushing, right? That, that kind of, it was test score, test score, test score. Now, students are more than just test scores. Students are open for a lot of different avenues and a lot of different opportunities. We're talking about internships. We're talking about, you know, industry credentials. We're talking about a lot of different opportunities for students that's going to widen the gamut for, for a lot of different things that they can show evidence of post-secondary success, right? College and career readiness. And, and that's what this shows.
I want to thank you for this because, like I said, we're making, we're making a whole new world. And this one came from your brain, so I thank you and your team's brain. So I thank you very much for that because it is, you know, helping our children in this day and time to make sure they succeed. And this is part of them succeeding, so thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm going to lead into the recommendations. And we have short-term and long-term. Because short terms are things that we can do right now and long-term are things that we're going to be working towards as we start peeling back the layers of all of these requirements. So the Act 158 pages are in the Program of Studies. We added two pages, nine and 10. The letter guaranteeing full-time employment, right? We're going to get that out to parents. It's going to be on the website. SAT School Day for all 11th grade students is already scheduled for March 23rd. We're going to be working on a communication plan for that to make sure that people understand the importance of SAT School Day. Why are we doing this? Why, now you know. This is why, right? Developing communication plan for, for students and parents. We have to get this out to students and parents, right? We have to communicate the importance of this. CPR First Aid Certification Over Summer Programming, that's an industry-based credential. That's something that students can, can ground in that evidence-based pathway. Expanding our dual enrollment offerings with LTRC. We've always had dual enrollment offerings, but really expanding out on, on interest-bearing offerings for students. What do they want, what, what do they want to see, right? The addition of service learning projects on page 10. Next slide, please. Go ahead. Sorry.
That's okay, I'm sorry. With regard to the SAT, do, are we going to build in any prep time for our students for that?
So they've been working on that already because, because it is coming. So I met with the SOIs previously to kind of work that into English and math classes to get that going ahead of time. Yep. Okay, now you can go. So in addition to that, we're asking to bring back the old, air quotes, graduation project as the service learning projects. Service learning projects really do help students build character by allowing them to foster and develop personal values, beliefs, awareness, self-esteem, confidence, sense of empathy, social responsibility. It really does build community inside and out of your school. It connects students to staff. It connects students to, to your, your buildings and it connects students to your community. A lot of districts in the, in the Commonwealth have already brought service learning projects to their, to their schools and made them a requirement for their students. We're asking for the addition of service learning to be brought back at a minimum of 10 hours. The, the option for the class of 2023, because 11th graders were confident that our class of 2023, with all the requirements that are in place, they're going to be good to go. And making it optional is really going to be putting it to them as, you, you could use this for a college application, right? Let's get this out there for this. And, and we're going to push them to do it as an option. But really, your 10th graders need to get this on as a requirement. So that, we're asking that it be a requirement for the class of 2024 and beyond. There's a booklet that we've made to go along with it. It's going to be college and career readiness along with community service. Those two components. So they'll be doing 10 hours of community service and/or job shadowing and career readiness. Projects will be supervised and assessed by an adult and then final presentation given during their senior year, similar to what we had done previously with the graduation projects.
I have a question on that. The 10 hours. We do have a certain situation in our Allentown School District. I'm, I'm, I'm not really for that, to be honest with you. When it comes to, you know, we be having, having it be a requirement because not each student can do this. Some situ, there are situations where, you know, they are the babysitter. They are the caregiver because it's got people working in their household. They might not be living at home, they may be homeless. We don't know. So I'm just a little weary on that one.
So we, we had done graduation projects in the past and they were very, very large. They were 30 to 40 hours. And it, it was, it was very cumbersome. 10 hours of service learning is a lot, a lot of times, service learning can be done within your building. They can be done within ASD. They can shadow a teacher. They can work with, there's a lot of things that can be done within Allentown School District to support students. There's a lot of connections that can be made very easily that 10 hours at minimum to ensure that these kids are ready for college and career and/or career and prepared to go out in the community is not a whole lot of hours.
I, I really want to see a little more study on that. I'm, I'm just thinking that and I see it. I don't see the upside to that one.
Any other questions?
That's great.
So I, I graduated from Allen and I actually did the graduation program. I did, I believe it was 45 or 50 hours of community service, but I had to go find community service. Is there something that you would assist them with getting to? Because I ended up going to the Boys, the Teen Center on Seventh Street. And I just did community service over there. But is there some way to help them with that? Because if they do like, what, 15, 20 minutes a day or something like that, does that still count? And is there something that you have set up?
So we worked with the, with the team. We worked with the team. This was a process over the course of the last month and a half to two months, developing this out with administrators, with counselors, with groups of teachers, really honing in on what, what would work. And in the booklet, there is tons of, a list of all of different kinds of places that you can go, people that you can meet. But part of it is ensuring that there's a mentor inside of the school that can help you map this out as you go. Similar to advising, similar to what you're doing, like what Build, Hell Building 21 does it. Like their advising program works with the students to ensure that they're working and doing this, right? They're helping the students to plan this out, what works. So it'd be very similar. Making sure that that's in place.
It's a small, small class. Whereupon, we got a lot more children in, especially in Allen. We haven't, we don't have enough for guidance counselors. How can we make sure, I mean, because that's just, it's not sitting well with me with that one. I'd like it, but I would want to see how it's going to be implicated and implicated where every student can get this. Because how did so much students fall into the craft? And then guess what? They don't graduate.
I just want to clarify. Maybe I didn't, was tuned out and shouldn't have been, but this is not a mandatory component. This is a part of the evidence-based options, right?
It's part of evidence-based. But we're asking that it would be a requirement for the class of 2024.
I'm sorry, I didn't process that part. Thank you.
Yeah.
But didn't you say there was an alternative? You said it was the community service or?
It's community service, community service and/or job shadowing.
Okay, job shadowing. I couldn't remember what the second one was.
Community service and/or job shadowing.
So, so to be clear then, on slide 11, evidence-based pathway, you're saying for the class of 2024, there won't be those options? We will make everybody take a service learning project?
Yep, service learning is in there.
Well, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. When you say it's in there, what do you mean by that?
So service learning is an option that's in there, but we're asking that service learning is added as a graduation requirement for all students. Similar to the graduation project that we had previously.
I want to make a comment. Honestly, I don't think that's a bad idea. Reason being, almost any employer is going to require students, you know, to commit. When it comes to, you know, the service learning project, I feel this is going to create a sense of team. And if you're not able to work within a team, then most employers won't hire you. And also colleges require you to be able to have a team-based, you know, component within a class. So preparing for capstones, you know, class projects, like that's essential. And, you know, I have children that is in the district and I have an older daughter who graduated from the district. And she did way more than 10 hours. So I think 10 hours is durable and it would allow our students to persevere as well. The many obstacles that they do face. But I think with all that, many of them, you know, are dealing with now, I think 10 hours could be manageable. But if there's a situation where, you know, certain circumstances happening, is there a way that we can be a little lenient on those students that, you know, come across issues?
That's something that could be discussed in further. However, I agree. You know, and I think I'm still in the concerns for some people. You know, the fact they don't want one more thing to prevent the student from graduating. But I don't see it that way. I kind of see it the way that you see it. I, I, I feel like the, that whole self-esteem being a part of, we need that. And I don't think because of our past experiences, we should run away from it. We should pretty much, I mean, I think we're going to be okay. And then to speak to students having their work in, their family situation is not set. Those are actually actual opportunities to fulfill that 10-hour requirement. And so if we're providing opportunities within the school district and we have community partners who are, and we have advisement in place, I don't really see it as a problem, but I would, if, if we need to have further conversation just to be, feel more comfortable, I'm okay with that.
One of the long-term recommendations that I am working on is master scheduling to fit advising into the scheduling for DAREF and Allen as well, similar to what Building 21 has, to ensure that the time is there in the schedule. So when we're talking about, counselors have large loads, that these teachers have classes, 22, you know, 25 students in an advising load, that they can take these students in the service learning projects. This is their advising period, right? So if we have the ability to do that, similar to what we've already kind of been doing in, in other areas. So we're, we're exploring those options as well.
I have another question. Something just came to mind. So say if our students are currently involved in a program through a nonprofit organization that they often go to, some of them volunteer there. Could they utilize that time as it? And if they currently have a job, they could also apply those.
Yeah, clubs and activities count as well. So there's, in the, in the, in the manual, there's like clubs and activities and some other things that they do that they already volunteer time for, it does count as well. Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just think we need to talk about this a lot more.
We'll take you.
We'll take you. Next slide. So the addition of two LifePath courses was also added, page 26, Through the Century Promise. We have five students taking two LifePath courses, obtaining industry credentials while learning and working hands-on with LifePath professionals. These students are getting six hours per week doing work-based learning with LifePath in addition to a course with LifePath Coach. So they're getting, they're getting credits while they're going out doing work-based learning in, in these classes, doing this direct professionals, direct support professionals program. This is something we started through the Century Promise program. So those two courses were added. Next slide, please. Next slide please. Some long-term recommendations, um, looking at adding the ACT Work Keys to the Assessment Plan. ACT Work Keys is a college and career readiness um, assessment, similar to ACTs, but really focused on college and career readiness skills. Um, so we're looking at how we can add that to our assessment portfolio for students. Um, ACT SAT and PSAT prep classes, RFP, um, that we have out. We're looking at how we can bring a service provider in to provide more of those services. Um, curriculum planning in AP courses, making sure that we have some professional development for AP teachers to increase those AP scores to meet the cut score um, for some of those um, those AP courses. Cooperative education program with teachers embedded into the Workforce Board Skills Course. Um, so we can meet that as well. Um, working with the IT Department to develop industry-based credentials within those IT courses like Google certifications, Microsoft certifications. Um, we have the courses already, so now it's building those courses up so we can provide those certifications for our students. Um, and then, as I said before, master scheduling adjustments to include advising. So we can do service learning, mentoring, SEL, restorative practices in those advising courses. Next slide please.
Okay, I'm going to go back to that. The Google and the Microsoft courses. Are they going to make sure that our children can go out, once the students finish this, they can actually get a job with this? Or just, I mean, I need a true, true certification, not just something we did here in ASD.
Ms. Saylor. That would be a question for you.
So, so certain things we afford students to serve as policy, uh, it is not field. And we are certain processes that we focus on, based on the interest. So it doesn't make, it doesn't increase employee.
Okay, I definitely want to see that when it happens.
Absolutely.
I want to go through that course, okay?
And there, and there are.
Next slide.
And those would be the same types of certifications that students are being offered in, in universities right now.
Yep, yep, yep. And LCTI and, yep.
And LCTI, yes.
Yep. So next steps, communication to students and families on Act One Fifty-Eight is at the top of the realm for next steps, making sure that that goes out. Um, communication for service learning, um, communication for SAT Day. That's got to go out, SAT Day is March twenty-third, right? Um, we've got to make sure that that goes out and goes out strong. Um, we're working with Sapphire. Um, Dr. B is really great at working with Sapphire for ease of reporting. This is, these five pathways, there's a lot of pieces in the reporting of all of that. Um, PDE is not going to have the reporting piece ready until mid-spring to late-spring. Um, which means we have to have something in place to make sure that we're ready to go. Um, so Burbom's been very good about making sure that Sapphire has some pieces in place for us. Um, planning with principals to make sure that we are identifying the eleventh grade class ahead of time. That's where Burbom came in place with all of those um, accountability measures. Um, reviewing summer PD offerings with College Board AP, uh, summer institutes. All of that comes into play with the PD offerings. And then embedding some supports within the high school summer learning plan as well to make sure that we have supports in place as we go out to summer for our eleventh grade students that are going to be seniors next year. Any questions?
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
It's a lot.
Okay, may I, at this time? Let's see, may I have a motion to move the, what do we call on this? The Program of Studies for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Second, first, this is Wilt and this is Matheson, thank you very much. Um, is there any discussion?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for all the work that, that you and your team have put into this. Um, I think these pathways, you know, having been in the district a long time and watching the test, 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 tests where kids can't stand being identified by test scores. Um, this is really encouraging because I think it's going to build confidence in our kids. Um, it's going to be um, affirming to them for their self-worth. And um, one of the other things that I wrote down is, is it recognizes our students' individuality. Um, and I just really want to thank you for providing these opportunities for our, our, our students to, to see um, what, what's out there for them, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilt. Um, is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposes? Hearing and seeing none, this moves forward to our next regular board meeting for February twenty-fourth, two thousand.
Hmm.
At this time, is there any um, comments from the public?
Yeah, me back to Alicia Ruthroff.
Can we come forward, please?
Please state your full name, address, and please speak loudly so that we can hear you.
All right, I will do my best, thank you. Uh, hi, I'm Alicia Ruthroff, I live at uh, four eleven, four eleven North Ninth Street in Allentown. Uh, I'm a member of Lehigh Valley Stands Up. I came here today um, uh, because I was hoping to uh, see or hear about an update on the uh, safety audit. I think it's been, I believe it's been um, maybe set uh, a few months now since we've had an update on it. Um, I noted that on the agenda for the, for tonight, uh, goal one that was listed on there was to cultivate a culture in which students feel safe, valued, and nurtured. Um, I believe that the safety audit is a value, very valuable tool for figuring out what is needed um, in order to make that happen. Um, our student's safety is uh, very important. I know um, everyone here would agree with that. So um, I would just encourage the board to continue moving forward with the audit.
Thank you very much. You have any other call?
Yep, Cecilia Gerlock.
Hey, this is joyous to be here. Um, so my name is Cecilia Gerlock, I live at one oh nine South Ninth Street here in Allentown. I am the new lead organizer for Lehigh Valley Stands Up. Many of you may be accustomed to Ashley Strange, who came before you, along with Alicia, some other uh, members. Uh, so along the same lines, um, I know one of the concerns when Ashley was the leader was the lack of uh, safety task force meetings. Um, so I am here um, just wondering when the next safety task force meeting will be. I know with COVID, it might be a little bit challenging to get folks together. Um, but to follow up with uh, with Alicia, um, and, and the comments that she was making, it's really important that when the safety audit does occur, or if it has occurred, that it's a holistic safety audit, it's not just looking at doors and windows. It's actually looking at, you know, the safety of marginalized students, um, where they feel safe, who they feel safe with. Um, but yeah, so I echo Alicia's comments and then also would urge the school board to have a safety task force meeting at some point. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there others? Thank you. Um, at this time, is there any old business? Any new business? Any grass catchers? At this time, I'll move on to adjournment.
So moved.
This is Wilt, second by Mr. Deal. All in favor?
Right.
Any opposes? Meeting adjourned, we'll now go into our finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Conover. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee, the whole meeting, the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Allentown for today, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Again, during this meeting, the board doesn't uh, invite and welcomes public comment. If you do have something you'd like to say, please fill out one of the cards in the back table and then hand it in to uh, Ms. Ramos, our Deputy Superintendent. Um, whether it's on agenda items or not, uh, we do welcome comments. Um, on today's agenda, we have uh, two items. One is the Lehigh Career and Technical Institute Budget. The second item is monthly report of budget status, which we get closer toward the school, the uh, regular monthly board meeting. And Dr. Stanford, do you have any comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to recognize just briefly before we, we kick this over to Mr. Risticizian and uh, the, the staff, the folks at LCTI. Uh, we have three representatives on this board that are on the Joint Operating Committee um, in LCTI. And they are Mrs. Conover, Ms. Matheson, and Ms. Ortiz. And want to thank them for serving in that capacity. It does, you know, take uh, at least one whole night a month, if not more, obviously. Um, and uh, their commitment to ensuring that our students in Allentown are well represented. And before uh, I, I bring this over to Mr. Risticizian, I would open the floor to my three colleagues, Ms. Ortiz and Ms. Matheson and Mrs. Conover, if there's anything you'd like to say since you represent us at LCTI.
No, I don't have anything to say. I would like, well, she doesn't, she does.
I haven't been able to yet attend a meeting, but I will be attending one this month and I'm looking forward to that.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Uh, and Mr. Risticizian, are you with us, sir?
He, he's online, but his voice is a little bit um, challenged, so I'll, I'll introduce the item if that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
No problem. Um, tonight, the, the action item that the district is bringing forward is the request to approve the LCTI operating budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, the proposed support for that budget is approximately seven point five million dollars, which includes eight hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars and change for the academic center for the students enrolled in, in that program. Um, tonight with us, I believe on Zoom, we have um, Dr. Rushton and Business Manager Patricia Bader. And I'll turn it over to them to present their budget, which you should have a document in your handout that they'll speak to.
I apologize.
Right, and he didn't stop me, so we don't have any cards, comments on agenda items, right? Okay, thank you, because I didn't ask him that.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me first begin by thanking the Allentown School District for the invitation tonight to discuss our budget. I'm actually coming to you from a workforce symposium in Hershey, Pennsylvania. And, and we actually, they are recognizing statewide, one of our students, Paige Knowles. She's a graduate from last year, but she's a female plumber who actually wrote a book uh, trying to entice uh, young, young women to enter the skilled trades. So she was honored today for her, for her really progressive stance on bringing more non-traditional uh, people into, into the, into the skilled trades, which are, which are in high demand. Let me start first by introducing my business administrator, Mrs. Patricia Bader. She's going to be with me tonight to discuss the budget. I'm going to cover just the basic budget process for you, so you understand the timelines. And then we'll get into the budget a bit and then we'll, we'll, we'll have our discussion and then we can take, take any questions that you have. Uh, just for those of you that are new to this process, we first present our first look budget, we call it, in November, at our committee of the whole meeting and also presented to the superintendents in November. We give a, a very brief budget update in December and then in January, we give our final budget presentation to the Joint Operating Committee, who then votes to send it to the districts. And it's the districts like yourselves that actually vote our budget, uh, to approve our budget and adopt our budget. In November, the budget that Pat and I had presented to both the superintendent's group and our JOC at our committee of the whole meeting, had a, almost a two hundred fifty thousand dollar deficit that we had to, to make up. So post that presentation, we, Pat and I wanted to make sure we presented to our consortium a balanced budget moving forward. So let me first recognize my administrative team worked extremely hard to make sure that this balance, that this budget was balanced and that we did not have any hit to our fund balance. And ultimately, ladies and gentlemen, we, we, we make you the promise that we maintain program quality. Because in current technical education, program quality is paramount and that's what makes a quality school. And understand that your current technical school, LCTI, is, is, is recognized throughout the state and the country a, as a school of excellence. So at this point, I'd like to move to the presentation. Uh, Ms. Bader will begin to, to discuss it. I will then, I will then jump in and talk about the instructional changes relative to the programming that allowed us to make, to make up this deficit and not affect our fund balance. And then we'll continue forward and take any questions that you have at that point.
Okay, I'm going to um, share my screen, which I believe, oh no, I'm not able to do that. Um, is that an option for us to share a screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I, I do have the ability to do it now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr..
So at this point, you should be seeing uh, slide three, which um, says the salary details. Um, can someone confirm that for me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so as you know, um, one of the biggest expenditures that a school will face is the salary and benefits. So we did have an increase of um, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in our salary uh, line item. Um, and you can see the um, the breakdown of that amount. This was the area, as Dr. Rushton said, that we looked in to close that gap that we had. Um, so we, we did have personnel increases, um, which I'm starting off here. Uh, the personnel increases, which are based on an average of the sending district on a one-year lookback, ranged from three percent to three point five. The teachers are the only ones that are on a salary schedule, there's no averaging. It's actually built into the contract and that's new with this contract. And then we removed some positions. Dr. Rushton, would you like to discuss that?
Yes, let me jump in. Uh, the first position that was eliminated, ladies and gentlemen, was last year. I reduced the span of management at LCTI by one position, restructured, added a director position that now took leadership over two business units and reduced the position. It's a, uh, career academy principal position, I reduced that position by one, but still, still operating both business units fully. You'll see beneath that, three CTE instructor reductions, let me briefly explain each one of those. Precision machining, precision machine tool technology is a program that is in extremely high demand, but often suffers from challenges in, in recruiting because obviously many students just don't understand what, what that field is. There was a two-teacher program. We had lost a teacher uh, who, to another school, he had left and gone to another school. And the numbers did not necessitate hiring a second teacher. We were able to use one teacher uh, for the same amount of equipment, same square footage, but the numbers were ju, were such that we were able to run on one single teacher. So we're able to reduce that second position for now. In the future, subsequent administrations may have to look at hiring another teacher as that program rebuilds and continues to grow. But for right now, we're able to maintain full quality of that programming with one teacher based on our current numbers. You'll see the second program, Emerging Digital Media, this is a new program, largely based on developing content for, for internet. This program is new, roughly two years old, we had the original teacher resign. We are currently operating it with a long-term sub. But we're, what we found through our analysis, because this long-term sub's contract will sunset in June, we're able to then merge this program with another program, a commercial photography program under the same SIP code, I, I won't get too big into the acronyms in current tech ed, but that means classification of instructional program. We will now run the Emerging Digital Media and Commercial Photography as parallel programs under one SIP code. Actually, as we analyzed it, it turns out that they're, they're great adjuncts for one another, actually building upon each other. And we currently have a teacher teaching commercial photography who can now take that merge of the digital media and the students that were in that program solo, there are enough seats to transition them into this program, or if they choose not to continue on, we'll work to find them other programming. And lastly, criminal justice, we had three teachers in this SIP code. We still have two, are the teacher that we had teaching EMR, which is emergi, excuse me, emergency medical responder. Uh, actually, so nurse was going back into healthcare. And what we had done in this case is contracted with Citronia Ambulance Company, who handles our. who handles our training for EMR certification for our students. And that worked out, quite frankly, much better than we had anticipated, and they're they're doing a great job with our students. So we're able to now offer that industrial certification, also keeping our criminal justice program fully intact. That combination, you'll see criminal justice, EMR, our ultimate goal is to evolve this into a homeland security program in the future, which will encompass everything from criminal justice to emerging emergency medical responder technician slash even into the fire sciences. That that's down the road. We were able to merge that with that teacher leaving and still cover the certifications that we needed for our students. This is, there are many hours of work and analysis to come up to this presentation we're giving you tonight. But I assure you, as I said in my opening, program quality maintenance is paramount for us. And we're able to do that with a very slight change in our overall capacity of fifty-three seats. And so the same programming quality and certifications for our students. Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, and then the next section, you can see some positions that we added. We have a new lab, which is very popular and is probably two-thirds full at this point. It's called Animal Science Instructor. We we moved two of our administrators to twelve months from ten when we reduced that one administrative position. And you can see, I won't go through the rest of those. On this slide five, I I like to have a slide like this for folks who are new to school business to see exactly how much we spend in our salaries on instruction. So this blue section, as well as the Perkins-funded IAs, are and as well as this light blue section. So all of these salaries are what we spend on instruction for the students. In our benefits, we had a twelve percent increase in our healthcare and our dental benefits declined by five percent. We also had a decline in the increase of Peasers, which impacted this budget. And we just had a few other little benefits. I like to show this slide as well for people new to school business, where you can see how much Peasers makes up of our benefits, how much healthcare does, and the other benefits. A lot of these benefits are memorialized in the labor contracts and other agreements that we have. So this slide eight shows you how much we actually have. We have a twenty-nine million dollar, just just under thirty million dollar budget. How much of that is salary and benefits? And I want to draw your attention to this other section where we have huge declines. What we've done here is we have eliminated a lot of IT, both equipment and and software from our budget. And we are going to be using grant funds to pay for those expended expenses. We believe that our our, it's called gear funding, is going to be available to us in twenty-two, twenty-three, as well as twenty-three, twenty-four. But please rest assured, ladies and gentlemen, the administration is well aware that these expenses will have to be built back into a future budget and that we'll have to address this budget saver that will be coming back into the budget in future years. I've gone very quickly on that, and we've discussed a couple of topics. I'd like to stop here and see if there's any questions.
Any questions? None at this time? Okay. Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. I can continue on with some information on our revenues. We are expecting a shortfall in revenues from our vocational subsidy, because we have a decline in our student population due to COVID. And I will move into this area. We talk about the proportional share by which our budget is distributed amongst all of the members of the consortium. And the operating expenses for the half-day program are distributed amongst the nine members using a five-year average of our average daily membership. And you can see that percentage here. This next slide I do like to show, because it shows over time how the proportionate share is changing over time. And that greatly affects the amount of portion of the budget that gets assigned to each school district. This is an amount that shows where our subsidy, where we think our subsidy levels will be for each school district. And I do want to assure you, at the end of the year, whatever subsidy we have received on behalf of your school from PDE is assigned specifically to you. Regardless of what the budget is, we give you credit for what the actual amount of subsidy that we receive on your behalf. Another apportionment for both debt service and capital projects, this is the capital projects, is that we take the market values of each school district, and we come up with another apportion share. And we increase, we've increased our facility capital project by fifty thousand dollars. The traditional amount was a hundred thousand dollars. We are finding that our capital project needs are increasing. And we looked at that hundred thousand dollars, and we said, oh, that that amount has been in place since nineteen ninety. So we increased it by fifty thousand dollars to address our needs. This slide, I apologize, it's very small, but it does contain a lot of information, and it talks about our our debt. We have one bond, and it it helped create our new welding lab, which was introduced a few years ago, as well as the two thousand and six construction project. And this again is a slide that shows how the apportion share compares over time. This slide shows the three pillars of our budget. We have our estimated net cost, which is based on the five-year average of the ADMs. So it's the half-year, half-day budget. And then we have our capital projects and our debt service. Both of these columns are based on the market values for a total. This show slide shows the, in in Allentown's case, there's a decrease for the year. And this last show slide shows you that we return, we call it excess revenues. What basically that means revenues in excess of expenditures. We return seventy-five percent of the excess revenues to each school district on the January twenty-two invoice. Of course, we have to go through our audit. So the excess revenues that are in our budget as of June thirtieth, twenty-one, we return to you. In your school district, when you have excess revenues, they go to your fund balance. What we do is we return seventy-five percent to each school district on the same portion as which it was paid out in, paid into us by. Are there, that was a really quick run-through of our budget. Are there any questions regarding anything I've said?
Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes. Okay, so I'm looking at page three.
Three? Yes.
I'm looking at the Allentown budget. And what percentage we're putting into your budget?
Uh, is that slide three? I'm not sure what.
Different packet. Oh, okay, it might be a different packet then.
It's the thirty, the thirty-two percent, Ms. Harris. Is your microphone on, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Speak in there, because they can't hear if you don't.
The thirty-two percent, that comes from Allentown of your proportionate share of the budget. And that's more than everyone else, correct? Because no one else is that close to stuff for Parkland or seventeen percent.
So that is based on the five-year average of the average daily membership.
Right, that's what I wanted to bring up. Okay. And then we go back to the historical average calculation, which is on page two. And we're looking at a five-year average, which again is thirty-two percent. So if we go to page four, then we see the number of students is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two students. What, and seven hundred and forty-five of them from Allen. Okay, so we go to page six. And again, we look at the numbers of the member district total share. And we keep coming out, there's no one close to us in that number. We're six million dollars right there. The closest to us is Parkland at three million. Okay, now we're gonna go to page twenty-eight. There's a method to this madness. And if we look at page twenty-eight, this is the academic center. We look at our costs, and we're at eight hundred, eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-two. No one comes close to that again. And then the last one is page thirty. I'm looking at your academic center fund balance. Three hundred and nine thousand of that, of that five hundred, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand is Allentown. So you have a fund balance, quite a lot of it comes from Allentown.
That's your fund balance. That's not our fund balance.
Okay, that's our fund balance. Okay. So I'm putting all those things out to say that Allentown, let's face it, thirty-four percent of your of your budget comes from us. Quite a bit of it comes from us. I have a question when it comes to your staff. We know that Allentown is eighty-five percent Hispanic and black. We are making sure we're we're going towards getting our staff to be more diverse. What are you doing to your staff to get them more diverse? So our students who come there see themselves.
Yeah, Ms. Harris, I'll jump in. That's a great question, and that's something we strive for constantly of the vast majority of our instructional staff, which are without a doubt predominantly one race. It's 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 a hundred percent white in that regard on the on the instructional staff. We recruit heavily from from industry for our programming. And what we do is when we recruit for open positions, we actually do statewide recruiting. We we actually, besides the typical SIP recruiter and things of that nature, we also advertise with our current tech organizations, which really spans across the entire state, down through Philadelphia, Harrisburg, and Pittsburgh, the major urban areas as well, to try and recruit in business and industry for these positions. It is, I I'm sure you see it even in your own district. It is not easy, but it is a challenge that has to be met. And I completely agree with you. We are working very hard trying to diversify our our staff. I can tell you on the on the school level, we are one of the few, if only current technical schools in the state of Pennsylvania, who framed our comprehensive plan, which has been approved now for almost two years, with Equity as our framework. That has never been done before, and that was at my insistence, because we, I need to get that into our infrastructure to begin to build upon it. Our next move beyond that is to work on our policies to reflect our comprehensive plan. It's all an amalgam of trying to increase the diversity of our staff, because you're exactly right. We want our students to see in our teachers themselves and success that that is possible. So I can't argue with you one bit. You're exactly right, and we are working to try and change that.
Okay, so yeah, so I've been hearing that answer for five years now. So I'm hoping that you really, really. Okay, well, definition of sanity is asking the same things and doing the same things over and over again, and thinking you're gonna get a different answer. Okay. You know what? I'm finished. That's, I'm fine.
Okay. Any any other questions? Yes, Mr. Palmer.
Can can everyone hear me? Is there a, because I I was looking through here and I didn't see it. Is there any breakdown of the percentage of Allentown students that start and finish the program completely?
Completers from start to finish?
Yes.
Yeah, that's something that I can get to your superintendent. That that's a that's a very complex calculation, because you're looking at, you have to calculate from when students enter to when they leave, and that could be anywhere from ninth to twelfth grade. Oftentimes, we have students come in ninth grade or tenth grade, but we often have students come at eleventh or twelfth grade, so they might not get there until their final year. Will they be a completer by the by the official definition of the word completer by the Department of Ed? No. But I can get you a breakdown of your school district if if that's something you'd like to see.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That's something I don't have here, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get that to Dr. Stanford.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Thank you, Dr. Rushton.
You got it.
Any other questions or comments, questions in the sta- uh, my colleagues? Okay, seeing none. This is a motion, an action item that will be on the, if approved, on the board meeting at the end of the month, and I would accept a motion to approve. Ms. Matheson, do we have a second? Thank you. Do you have a second? Mrs. Conover, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And this goes on to the board meeting at the end of the month. Do we have any comments from the public on non-agenda items, Mr. Hargit? Thank you. Any old business to come up for the board, the committee of the whole, Finance Committee of the whole? Any new business?
Yes. I just want to take a quick moment to thank our student reps for being here. I see Mike down on the end there from from Deraf. And I and I don't believe we have a rep from Allen with us, but I believe Nicole is also on Zoom listening in. So I just wanted to thank you all for being here and hanging out with us tonight.
You, Mike, Nicole. Thank you, Mrs. Will. Any grass catcher item? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. And Mrs. Will, second by Mrs. Conover, all in favor? Thank you, Vetch. Have a great evening, everyone.
I ate before I came, but I'm still starved.